Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Here.
Ms. DeLea?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Ms. Chun?
Here.
Mr. Rossi. Seven present.
We now go to one of my favorite items on the agenda, three special order business, which is the spotlight on excellence 2022 Civics Day event. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. We have Ms. Santelman here with us that'll introduce our spotlight on excellence. Ms. Desmond, would you like Ms. Santelman just to take it directly, or do you have an intro? Ms. Santelman?
Thank you very much. I'm delighted to be here to talk about a wonderful event. So our first Lowell Civics Day was on April 4th, 2022, and we were very grateful that Mayor Chow designated that day as Lowell Civics Day as part of the city council meeting. But I wanted everyone to understand that that event was the culmination of weeks and weeks of work by our eighth grade and 11th grade civic students using a protocol that we've been coached on through our nonprofit partner generation citizen. So students start off with identifying an issue of concern to them in the community, and they research the root causes of that issue, and they talk with local community members who have knowledge of that issue to gain knowledge. And so some of you may have been interviewed by students at that point. Then they work together on a project. They elect representatives from their class to present their project, and then they came to our Lowell Civics Day. So previously, we had been going into a Massachusetts Civics Day event in Boston at the State House where we were one of many, many districts. And in that scenario, the students were trying to advocate for their position with state legislators. So they were talking more about House and Senate bills and trying to make impact there. But we wanted to create our own Civics Day event here in Lowell so that our students could talk with local changemakers and legislators here in our own district. And I think that worked out really well because we've seen already the impact of some of the actions that they have been trying to take. So just for example, there were some projects on school lunches, and one impact of that work is that some students are already on an advocate team with our school lunch director, Elisa Spooner Gomez. And we've also, well, you know, rather than continue on, I would rather actually introduce the students to talk about their own work and the impact that it's having on the community. So I think we'll start off with the middle school group. So we've got three students here from the Wang Middle School who did a project on racism's impact on mental health. And so we have Leilani True and Angelina Chia and Kobe Martin. So why don't you come on up and you can summarize your project for our school committee members?
So our project was on how racism can affect a student's mental health. So this project was quite important to many of us in our class specifically because racism is sadly something that we face every day in school, whether it's a comment on our skin or a comment on our face and our appearance.
I really want to hear more. Could you speak into the microphone?
Okay.
Thank you.
So during Civics Day, we did have a lot of issues with our poster. We had some issues where we had a lot of the wrong information, but we realized that during this whole project, we learned a lot more about how we're affected by it because we didn't just want basic statistics. We wanted it to be more personal. We wanted to share our experiences as students in the Lowell District. We wanted to share how this affected us, how this affected how we work. We had student quotes in there about how it affected them in their daily lives. How they, some students wanted to hide themselves. Some students wanted to change their appearance. They wanted to wake up with pale skin, blue eyes, and blonde hair because of all the racism they experienced. And it's affected some kids' grades terribly because there have been children who have, they weren't able to focus. So this was an issue that was important to us.
Do you want to speak up about how?
To add on to what Leilani was saying, it's like racism is like really like normalized now to the point where it's like, people will say slurs and not know it's like really wrong to say that, those slurs because it can really affect those people. And then like, as Leilani was saying about the quotes, it's so sad that people have to experience those type of things. And like, also being compared to people and like wishing they were different people. And like, it's like, also like, for example, if you go into a store, but you're like a different skin color, people, like, some people may think that you're doing something. Like, if you're a person of color, they would be thinking you're stealing because you're a person of color. But if it was a white person, it would be way different. And so like, that can affect the person's mental health who's being targeted because they're being targeted for something that's not even happening. And so I just think that's wrong.
We did Google Forms and like, we sent our surveys to people who have experienced racism. One of my friends have experienced racism by playing football practice. They're guarding someone, and he blocked them from catching it. And the dad said the N-word, "You people ruin the sport and you take the fun out of it." It was wrong. You shouldn't get that mad over it. You start saying racist stuff. One of my teachers, he went to his wife's house to meet his parents, to meet her parents, and they didn't like him because he was white, and they didn't like that. We also made a website for racism mental health awareness, and people spoke up about it and connected with it.
Why did we make the website?
We made the website to speak about racism and mental health and like to say it's a problem and we should stop it in common areas like school. We wanted to educate people about saying racial slurs and not making them more common in schools and any places.
So to sum up what Kobe was saying, we made a website, and we're printing out QR codes, and we're going to spread them around our school's building so that way students can scan those QR codes and they can be educated more about racism and what's wrong to say and what's okay to say. And it also helps them understand that they're not the only ones who are going through this. There are other people who are going through this as well, and they shouldn't feel too alone, nor should they feel afraid to speak up about this. And in our website, we also included Lowell Public Schools form where they can submit any racist incidents that have happened to them or any discriminatory incidents that's happened to them. Our main goal was to educate, educate and also reassure students that they're not going through this alone.
All right, thank you. Oh, can you tell them the name of your website, the URL maybe?
Uh, we haven't published it yet.
Oh, you haven't published it yet?
Yes, we're still working on it.
We'll get back to you on that. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the group in the high school. So we have Alice Muangie and Liliana DeSilva, and they did a project on combating homelessness by building a tiny home village of temporary shelters. So they can tell you about their work. Come on up.
The issue we chose to focus on was homelessness in the city of Lowell. So in our class, when we were trying to figure out what issue we wanted to focus on, we had a lot of problems, but we were thinking about how in Lowell specifically, as a university city, we have kids that come from all around the place to come to UMass Lowell, and their families may want to come to visit them. Unfortunately, in the city of Lowell, we have a lot of homelessness that some may see and some we may not see also. And we kind of, instead of just cleaning up the streets, like taking them off the, like where people can see them and just like hiding them from everyone's like view, we wanted to help them like get back up on their feet. So we were looking for a solution. So we had ended up reaching out to John Drinkwater, who came to kind of speak to us about zoning laws in Lowell. And we learned that in Lowell, we are behind in housing shelters by a few years, which is probably a big contribution to the lack of homes and the increase of homelessness. So we were searching up solutions in other parts of the country, and we saw that in Syracuse, they are similar size to Lowell, and they similarly to us are also a university city. They did this tiny village thing where they had like deconstructable and reconstructable homes that could house about like a family or like, some of them could fit like one person, some of them could fit two people and like a child if needed. And what pretty much they did is they had a park where they had these homes set up, and they kind of like a college dorm, all shared like bathrooms, but that was the only thing that they all had to share. Unlike homeless shelters, they would receive a lot more privacy and a lot more, like the sense of like having something to call their own. And there'd also be like more like dignity in that because for someone who has like a, there's a lot of negative stigmas towards homeless people because they're automatically seen that and assumed that they didn't work hard or that they got like addicted to something or like they just put themselves there. But that's not always necessarily the problem of how they got there. Because for some cases, like recently COVID got people like out of jobs, and when you don't have a job, you can't afford a house, and you can't have anywhere to live. So they may have also a negative stigma for approaching help in a shelter. So because also in some environments, like some shelters, it's also not as comfortable for them because they may not be able to like stay comfortably, leave their children comfortably, or like their own prop, like their own belongings comfortably. So these tiny homes that would all be kind of like, we were talking to John Drinkwater, and we were thinking about possibly if we were able to like make this happen using like the space behind Tewksbury State Hospital. Though it is outside Lowell, we would be helping the people in Lowell and even in Tewksbury or anywhere else nearby that needed the help because Tewksbury State Hospital also does have access to like rehab, and they also would be able to help us with like security and other stuff like that. So pretty much the goal would be to help get people who are on the streets and homeless into homes and to basically help them find jobs. If they need rehab, get them rehab, find them like just somewhere to go from where they are now. And before, like, we wouldn't rush them, obviously. So a question during our Civics Day that we had that came up a lot was like, how much time would they have? Everybody moves at their own pace, and everybody like does things like at their own time. So we wouldn't necessarily try to rush them, but we would encourage them to like find a job and like help them find jobs. And we would also hope to bring them back to the shelters after they're back on their feet so that they could be an example for those who are like newly moved in. So they could be like, because it's harder for someone who has never been in that situation to like go and motivate somebody in that situation. So having someone who we were able to help get out of homelessness, come back and talk to someone who's like newer, like in the environment, come back and be like, "I was able to get out, and I can help you get out as well." That would be kind of something we would like to focus on a lot also.
So this would be an example of what the houses look like. And then they're each 240 square feet of living space, and they're 12 by 20, and they cost around $2,000 each.
All right, thank you very much. So this is, so this is just a small sampling of the wonderful projects that were at Civics Day. And I wanted to thank their teachers who unfortunately weren't able to be here tonight, but our middle school students are the students of Ms. Ali Kuzara, who was our lead teacher for this initiative for all of the middle schools. And our high school students are the students of Mr. Joe Gisome, who was the lead teacher at the high school level for the Civics Day projects. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Kuzara and Mr. Gisome for the hard work they did on coordinating the Civics Day event itself. So if you were there, you saw them front and center. And also, finally, I wanted to thank all of you. I know many of you were very active participants during the Civics Day event, and it's so important to honor our students' work that way with your attention and your wonderful questions. And so we'll be doing this again next year. And so I want to put out the request right now. If any students from, that are doing action civics projects approach you as someone with a knowledge of their issue, please welcome them and have a conversation with them. It helps to make them very well-informed citizens who have a position to take, and if they're not just raising issues, they are coming with solutions, which is, I think, what we all want our young people to do as participants in our democracy. participants in our democracy. So I'm super proud of all of the students who participated in it, that they are learning some really great skills on how to advocate for well-informed positions. So thank you for inviting us tonight and for giving us the opportunity to talk about it.
Any comments from the committees? Ms. Chuen?
Couple of things. Um, I commend our, our speakers for, um, being brave enough to actually speak in front of all of us and I, you know, continue doing advocacy work and you know, it takes, uh, all of us to actually make our city better. And, um, speaking on behalf of the, um, you know, being racism is still, it's still well and alive in our city, you know, being myself, a person who came to America, um, facing, um, a lot of, um, racism and still seeing it here in our, our city where, again, we're known as the milk pot and what by you guys raising awareness and educating the, not just your, your grades or your, um, your generation, but the older generation to, to see beyond just your skin color and just to see beyond just your outer appearance. And I commend you for doing that. And we're going to stand strong together and continue that and continue in a positive way and educating. And to our friends that are, um, uh, doing the display on homelessness and there is a, a group that's on Facebook right now. It's called Life Connections and they're reaching out to the homeless and camp, the, um, homeless, um, they're, uh, going into the homeless encampments and speaking to our, our, our members who are homeless and maybe we can connect after this meeting and I can give you a little bit more details on that. But I commend all you guys for standing up and just continue embracing this, um, what you're doing right now. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I just want to thank, um, our young people for giving us hope. Because you know, we're getting older and I'd like to still think I'm young, but I am indeed getting older. And as we get older, it's important to be able to reflect on people that are dedicating themselves to making us better. I actually fall into both of those categories and I did already give my contact information, but anybody, if you would like to reach out to me. Racism hurts and it's very hard and it was one of the things that I did and do focus on a lot in my work here. Equity is so important and thank you for making sure that people see it. Because it needs to be seen because it's definitely felt. And so thank you for that and for talking about our homeless. Man, you, you need to, we need you in seats like this. I mean, the reality of it is, is the zoning laws are horrible and hopefully are looking at, being looked at and changed, but the fact that you were so thoughtful to think about all the things that would help, um, an unhoused individual move forward. And, um, you know, there's a lot of people that are facing housing insecurity and I think it's something that just to see that you guys are so, um, advanced in your thinking about making society and making Lowell stronger makes me, um, it makes me happy and it does absolutely give me hope and I, I need that. So thank you very much for that.
Any other comments? Um, i- if not, I just want to make a quick comment from up here. I want to thank Ms. Sandlerman for, and all the, uh, school staff and the volunteers for organizing the Civics Day. That, that was a huge production. And I think half the city was there. The, all the elected officials, many of the community leaders, uh, as well as residents and interested, uh, stakeholders, they were all there to support it. And I thank you for the, the two classes who are here to present the issues on racism and homelessness. You know, I'm, I'm apprised by your research on, on racism to understand the awareness, the nuances. Those, those were fresh ideas to me tonight. So thank you for doing the in-depth, uh, research and personal experience to present to us. And homelessness, um, as Ms. Thompson said, definitely we look forward to, um, your leadership in the future. Can't wait to follow your career and, uh, I look forward to hearing, uh, your, the solutions. Um, it, it's a problem as you mentioned, it should be collaborated across, uh, different communities. It's not one community problem. It's, it's a regional, it's statewide, it's a country's problem. So th- those are two huge, um, issues. Also want to thank the, um, other students involved with different projects. I was just impressed with the whole ideas that come. So those are the things that elected city officials and state officials work on from roads and potholes to the environments, um, to, um, economics to, I mean, that was just rather impressive that the students' ideas and the projects and they were able to put together in a very concise way. So a congratulation to you, uh, Ms. Sandlerman, to all the students, uh, for having a successful Civics Day. And we look forward to participating in Civics Day next year. Just maybe just for a couple of minutes, since the students are here already and Ms. Sandlerman, could I ask the students to bring both the posters inside the chamber? And we'll take photos of the students and you, Ms. Sandlerman, and the, uh, the members of school committee and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll need to promote those, those issues. We now go to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh, for the minutes. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the fiscal year 23 budget session of the Lowell School Committee of May 16, 2022. And the minutes of the Lowell School Committee of May 18, 2022. And to place them on file by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson. On the face of the eye, post, so you know the eyes have it, motions carry.
Sorry, Your Honor.
Uh, Ms. Doughty?
Uh, yes, I just had a, um, a comment and a question, um, about the minutes of our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Um, I noticed when reading the minutes that I misunderstood. Um, I'm talking about item number seven, one. Uh, reports on the interventions and enhancement report. So that is on, I guess it's page three of your minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting. I thought I had made a formal motion that night to send this, uh, report to the policy subcommittee, but I noticed from the minutes that it was not an act, an actual motion. And in looking at the report and my understanding about what's involved, so I would like to make a motion from the floor that we send this report to the policy and curriculum subcommittees because it is where I want to look at changing the policy that students are not, uh, required to miss allied arts for interventions. I recognize that it's a very complicated issue due to timing constraints and different school schedules. So I think it would be better to do it as a joint subcommittee between policy and curriculum. So my motion is to send this report to the policy and curriculum subcommittees. For further discussion, I think we need to move on this, um, and make some changes.
Okay, um, motion by Ms. Doughty to refer the, uh, the interventions and enhancement to the, uh, policy and curriculum subcommittee, second by Ms. Mon. Any discussions? Here none. On the face of the eye, post, say no, the eyes have it. That motion is carry.
Thank you. And I have one question from the minutes. And that is on, in reference to new business, um, eight point one. I had asked a question and I, I thought it was going to be in the packet. And my question was regarding how many new employees we've hired? Um, and what that number was. And I don't know through you to Dr. Boyd if he has that number tonight. Uh, but I was interested in getting a sense of how many new positions have been created? Uh, because we know that the ESR money is going to run out at some point and, uh, I just had a concern about that. So I don't know through you to Dr. Boyd if he's got that number for me tonight, but it was requested at the last meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Sure, I'll, I'll make sure I discuss that with our chief financial officer to make sure I get you the exact data.
Was, was, was that clear? So, um, that minute is now all set by you, Ms. Doughty. So we had the second on that already. So on the face of the eye, post, say no, so that motion is now carry on four point one. And now we go to permission to enter. Uh, five, which is five point one, permission to enter June 1st, 2022. And this, uh, permission under here is in regard to a lease and I believe , uh, Mr. Hall had sent a, the committee members emails and if you have, uh, read it. Uh, I'm going to ask Mr., uh, through Mr. Superintendent to, Mr. Hall, if you could just quickly, uh, summarize this, um, in this, uh, public meeting. Because if the, the member can choose to discuss the negotiation, the negotiations in the executive session or we can take a vote on here if, uh, that's agreeable. You know, by the, by the members, uh, by the explanation from Mr. Hall. So through Mr. Superintendent to Mr. Hall.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, so about two months ago, an RFP was issued to the city, um, where bids were requested for central office space. Um, Bon Marche Trust, uh, was the low bidder by a substantial amount. They are our current, uh, landlord as well. Uh, you may also, uh, remember several years ago, they offered a, uh, reduction, um, for option years, um, which the school committee, uh, took advantage of. They certainly didn't have to do that. Uh, but it was welcomed at the time, but needless to say, we went out to bid again to explore whatever space was available. There were two bidders and this was, uh, by far the lowest bid.
Ms. Doughty?
Uh, thank you. Just one quick question. So is that number we're approving tonight? Is that for a three-year lease?
Uh, yes, Ms. Doughty. I'm sorry.
That covers three years at central, for central office to stay at the Bon Marche downtown.
Uh, correct. It's 534,525, uh, a year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, if there's none, so would that be okay to take a vote out here? So I need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chuen? Mr. Rossi? Seven years approved.
We now go to memorials. Going to have a moment of silence to honor the lives lost of the 19 children and two teachers who were the victims of the senseless horrific shooting at Robb Elementary School in Uval, Texas. Please turn off the lights, dim the lights. We now go to motions. Seven point one. Mr. Rossi requests the superintendent to work with school and city unions, PTO organizations and volunteer organizations to put together an all hands on deck cosmetic task force with the goal to update schools identified in need of painting and or cosmetic upgrades over the summer break. Second by Mr. Rossi. I'm sorry, second by Ms. Chuen, Mr. Rossi.
Yes, um, this is an effort to coincide with the city, even the city council in terms of what we can do as volunteer organizations in terms of little things over the summer, just as Mr. Underwood provided a list of different things that could be easy to fix in the buildings. Maybe we could work together over the summer and, um, as a community, fix some things up and we're in pitch in to all do the work. So, um, that's where that motion kind of stemmed from. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. All in favor of the eye, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Next motion by Mr. Rossi, seven point two. Request the superintendent to audit special education teacher caseload across the district. Second by Mr. Lay. Mr. Rossi?
So in my previous life as a special education teacher, um, I realized that there's a lot of caseload and a lot of work and just kind of wanting to audit, um, how many students each special ed teacher is case managing because and how long it takes to actually work on a student. Because I just remember even myself, you know, working weekends and constantly just trying to get meeting notes, uh, everything done, just so there's some equity across the board. Um, with special education and, um, caseloads. So special ed teachers can have a life sometimes. Thank you.
Any other comments? That's a great motion. Here are no other comments. On the face of the eye, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Motion seven point three. Ms. Doughty requests the superintendent provide a report on sex education programming per middle school, including type of instruction on topics such as contraception, human sexuality, consent and pregnancy, as well as curriculum cover, time allotted at each grade and any use of outside programs, materials or guest speakers, second by Ms. Mon. Ms. Doughty? We have a registered speaker. Madam Secretary, please call the registered speaker, please.
Ms. Buie?
Uh, good evening, committee members. It's nice seeing you again. Um, Kay Buie and I'm from the Daily Middle School and I'm here to talk about the sexual education that we receive in schools. Um, recently I had a health class for one of my allied arts. And during that class, when we were learning about sexual education, I was really shocked to see what we were, what we were being taught. And to see that being taught was honestly really concerning because other students probably were taught the same things too. One of the things that we watched in that health class was a Christian faith-based program called Sex Ed, No Screwing Around. And it is a abstinence-only, um, teaching program. Um, a lot of the things said in the program were extremely concerning and one of the educators in the program, uh, their name is Pam Stenzel. Um, many times throughout the program, she would talk about how girls are quote, provoking boys to have sex with them and blaming it on how someone dresses or acts. Quote, "If this is a girl that's dressing in a manner that's not only saying to you, but the rest of the world, take me now. I've got a little advice for you. Run from this girl. Run," end quote. This is very harmful and not only perpetuates slut shaming, excuse my language, but also victim blaming when it comes to rape and sexual assault. Besides the program that we watched, I noticed that we were only being taught abstinence. Nothing about condoms, pregnancy, the different types of protection and contraceptives were mentioned in the classes. Consent was something I also noticed needed to be taught better because our class that taught about consent was very vague and very short too, as some of my classmates would agree. Um, and this, that shouldn't be the case. Middle schoolers should be taught about safe sex and for it to be unbiased and accurate. Though abstinence is still a very important topic to teach kids, it shouldn't be the only thing that they are learning. Realistically, abstinence won't entirely prevent teens from having sex. It is critical for people to learn about sex ed whether or not they plan on being sexually active in the future. Having com- comprehensive sex education can lower the risk of people getting STDs. Having comprehensive sex education can lower the risk of people getting STDs, teen pregnancy, and overall lower the risk of people engaging in risky sexual activity. This will also help erase the stigma of victim blaming when it comes to sexual assault. I believe the first step in the right direction would to first get a report on what the schools are already teaching when it comes to sex ed and what they aren't teaching in sex ed. With that information, we can look at materials that need to be taught and added to your school curriculum. We should make sure that every school provides its students with medically accurate, unbiased, and also inclusive health education. Thank you.
Ms. Ross?
Greetings. My name is Lily Ross, and I'm an eighth-grade student at the James's Daily Middle School. I'm here tonight to speak on the lack of proper sexual education. As an individual, I have experienced health class as part of my allied arts curriculum. To a certain degree, we've touched upon sexual intercourse. As opposed to learning to how to practice safe sex, we've learned abstinence as a whole. In reality, touching upon abstinence was watching a Pam Stenzel video. Notoriously known for her practice of abstinence, she had portrayed horrendous ideologies towards women. Pam Stenzel's video was built upon the fear factor rather than education. In Sex Ed: No Screwing Around, Pam suggests that a woman's clothes determine her openness to intercourse. This plants a seed into young, impressionable children that they're catalyst for another's pleasures. Pam's stories leave viewers with countless questions, as well as negative ideologies towards women. The video isn't objective, nor is it educational. It's biased, as she continuously berates women for dressing provocative. Rather than teaching insular boys to control themselves, she goes to victim shame. However, with the need for sexual education comes the need for representation. Similar to Pam's propaganda, many sexual educations revolve around heterosexual normalities. Many students go unrepresented due to an identity they cannot control. It provides a negative and isolating narrative for queer students. I believe students should be taught about protection, i.e., safe sex. UGA studies have shown having comprehensive understandings of STIs in teen pregnancy had the lowest rates compared to abstinence. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I hope we can get this issue resolved.
No other registered speaker. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. What I would like to share is some of the context. So later on in this meeting tonight, we'll be discussing, through the curriculum subcommittee, reporting out changes of having health as a requirement for students in the performing arts at the high school. This is what prompted me to think, I need to get an understanding of what we're doing in the middle schools. But then, I happened to be at an event at the Daily School last week regarding the intervention and enhancement report that was provided to the school committee at our last meeting. And these three young women, who came up to me bravely and very articulately, as you heard them tonight, talked about some concerns that I have to say frankly, I was horrified that here in Lowell, Massachusetts, that we would not be teaching comprehensive, medically valid, sex education. And that's what prompted me to put this motion forward. Those two things combined, I think it is something we definitely need to look at. Thank you.
I want to thank the speakers. And in short, I'll say, you deserve better, and we will do better, and we will make sure it happens. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, again, I share with my colleagues in sharing my thanks with these students who came to give us this information, for the teachers who I know have supported you. You know, I'm going to, as someone who's sat on the school committee for a very long time, we've addressed this. And this shows me once again how insidious this kind of information can be. We've had these conversations about, you know, partnerships in our schools that were bringing information that was not founded in what our students really need to learn and really need to be aware of. So I share the shock and horror that we would be providing students with messaging that blames women and girls for the actions of others. And I cannot applaud strongly enough. You're giving that voice tonight. It is a message that needs to be heard, and I will agree again with my colleagues, needs to be addressed today. This needs to be removed from our curriculum, this whatever tape. I don't know how it came to be used, but it is absolutely inappropriate, and it does a huge disservice. Not just, I mean, certainly to all the, our young girls, students, does a disservice to young boy students, and for any of our students who are, as I think one of our speakers mentioned, who are along the continuum. Everyone needs to be addressed, and everyone needs to be respectfully taught information that is of absolute value and doesn't have these kind of, you know, judgmental, outmoded ways of thinking that we have struggled for literally decades and longer to try and move beyond. So, thank you very much. And I know that this committee will take the appropriate actions. Thank you.
I want to thank both students for coming to speak tonight and enlightening us on what's happening with the sex education in the classrooms. So we appreciate you stepping forward. If no other comments, on, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I also want to recognize and support and encourage our students to utilize and leverage your voice as often as possible. And I want to recognize your courage to come here tonight, and also to, when out that, when you engage this type of stuff within your classroom, which you know to be wrong, there's some immediate steps that you can take, and we'll make sure that we can get this investigated and get it removed from the classroom very quickly. So, thank you, and I thank you for coming out tonight.
Mr. Rossi?
I just wanted to thank you for your brave, being so brave to come out and to talk about this, because this is a very taboo issue that no one ever used to talk about, and it's very, very real. I was thinking, you know, I would be going on 18 years teaching this year, and I couldn't have these conversations, because I was never taught properly. So if you're not taught properly, then you can't give it back, you know? And so I came from the school of thought, you know, my mother used to say, just don't ever have sex, because they'll tell you that the next one is better, or you were not as good as the last one, you know? And that's the mind thought that I grew up with, and that's just how it was. So it takes a very special type of person to engage in these conversations, and it is very intricate that we look at teachers who are teaching this, that can engage you in those conversations, that are going to bring out your own personal issues. And, you know, you would need to grow more. So, thank you for being brave and to, for coming out. And I think, I wish we could get this handled today, but the reality is, is that we just need to be smart moving on and finding the right people to really teach the inner layers of this, starting at middle school. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to 7.4, motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent provide a report by June 10 that responds to the payroll and processing concern identified in the powers and Sullivan audit in preparation for a joint meeting with finance subcommittees. The report should address how much was mistakenly paid out, how much recouped, why people were paid in error, and what is being done to make sure it doesn't happen again. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I believe the motion speaks for itself. This would be in preparation for a joint finance subcommittee meeting between the city council and the school committee, which my understanding was the council is asking for that. I just want to have our analysis in everyone's hands in time for that meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd just like to say, I know that there was some materials left on our desk tonight that we just received, so I don't know if anyone's had a chance to really go through it. I haven't. But just to ensure that when this subcommittee does meet, that we do have all of the questions answered from Ms. Doherty's original motion. Also to ensure that we're getting, I think what would be helpful would be, there are some things that are intimated here about moving towards, you know, an updated electronic system. Welcome to the 21st century. So if we could get some estimates of what that's going, what those expenses are going to be, what those investments are going to be needed for us to move forward with that, just to ensure that we have all the information we need, hopefully, at this next subcommittee, so that we can actually make some decisions. So it's important not only to have all the kind of backward-looking information, so we have a full sense of the scope of what prompted this, but also the forward-looking information about what it's going to take to get ourselves in an appropriate place for the future. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to make a quick comment that I'm glad that the Chief Financial Officer has already taken initiative to work with the city hall to resolve this problem. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to the Subcommittee's Report, we start with 8.1, School Improvement and Performance Management Subcommittee. Mr. Lay, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. The meeting took place on Thursday, May 12. We had, I'd like to thank Mr. Skinner for attending the meeting, and we also had members of six schools, I believe, who came to this meeting and present their proposals. There were school site councils, there were principals, there were teachers that came and they worked out, presented their, to present their proposal. They worked out their proposal to recommend several positions to be added, and those positions had been implemented into our budget that we had just passed. So, I'd like to report that as a progress.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none, need a motion to accept the report as report of progress by Ms. Thompson. Second by Ms. Chun, all favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. And after 8.2, the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee Meeting. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chow. So we did, the committee did meet on May 16. Present for the Subcommittee were myself, Ms. Thompson, and Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Lay also in attendance. Ms. Desmond was our admin. This was, I guess, our third, our third meeting on this topic. God knows why I have one when you can have three. But, and basically, we had the one topic where we were talking about making a shift so that students who are participating in, at the high school, in some of our fine arts curriculum will be able to receive their health, their health instruction through that fine arts program. So it really represents a partnership between the fine arts department in conjunction with our health department. And again, as I've said, we've had several conversations about this. I've reported on it several times, I know. And I think that we did kind of go through the specific standards and benchmarks that will be part of this. I think for all of the members who participated in the conversation, we maintain that we are committed to ensuring that students get this information and get it in an effective, productive way. We all recognize the importance of this information, as we've talked about earlier today. So I think that that's absolutely felt across the Committee. I will say that as we were having these conversations, one of the things that was presented from the high school was that, you know, we do have a lot of students who, because of scheduling, will run into a situation where they have to give up taking some of our fine arts courses because of health and other requirements. Thank you. Look at you. How helpful. It's okay. Other requirements. And this seems like a way that we may be able to accommodate that, to ensure that students are getting the information they need, but are able to craft schedules that really speak to them and speak to their high school experience. From my perspective, I think that we've received enough information at this point that it warrants trying, that we should try this. We are in the assessment business here in the Lowell Public Schools, so we know that we should be able to, over the course of a year, be able to effectively assess how effective this is for these students, so that at the end of the year, we'll be able to make an informed decision as to whether this pilot, this test, can really work for our students at Lowell High School. So the committee itself did not take a vote on whether to recommend this or not. Respectfully, we had some, we had some competing opinions. So the decision was made that the Subcommittee would bring this forward to the full committee, which is, of course, what's required anyway to enact any kind of action like this. And if it pleases the committee, I would make in the form of a motion that the Lowell Public Schools move forward, the high school move forward with this proposal to offer health instruction through our fine arts curriculum for those students for whom it makes, it works for their schedule.
Okay. So we have a motion that was from the Subcommittee meeting and make on the floor today to forward the health proposal to the full committee for a full vote for the next schedule school committee meeting. Second by, I'm sorry? That motion could replace that? Okay, so we don't need a second on that?
I need a second, yeah.
Okay, so, so we need a second on that motion? And any second? So we don't have a second? Okay. So we do have a registered speaker on this motion. Madam Secretary, please call the registered speaker.
Ms. Reeves? Ms. Reeves? Ms. Chow? Ms. Chow?
Chow. That was a ching.
Ms. Conlin? Ms. Conlin? Mr. Njeru?
Welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and your address.
Am I address? All right. Hello. My name is Glenn Jeru. My address is 1984 Middlesex Street, apartment number five. And I would just like to speak on behalf of the finance department, because I've dedicated so much of my time post-middle school to fine arts, specifically music. A little bit about me is I love playing music. I played bass. I have played bass since seventh grade. And I'm actually going to music, I'm going into UMass Lowell for music education, become a music teacher after high school. And I, coming out of middle school, which I played bass seventh and eighth grade, and I was coming into the high school, I was worried about my scheduling, because there are requirements, specifically the ones that I was worried about were gym and health. You need those to graduate. And the good thing about the fine arts is that the gym credit is already covered, but the health credit isn't. And because of that, I'll be speaking to advocate for it to be covered. And I'll be talking about it in a few points, where first, it's the amounts, the sheer amount of strategizing and finagling and moving around your schedule just to fit in health, where, as you said, you could put in, especially me personally, I'll get on later, I put in a bunch of fine arts classes, music classes, because I know I need them for college. Some people don't, some people do it for fun, but it's better to have that freedom to do so. And number two, it's... You have that relationship. I heard it was a worry that, you know, the relationship with the health teacher is a really important one to keep. But personally, for me, I have an amazing relationship with my band director. Fun fact, he kind of inspired me to go to school for music, because I wasn't sure exactly where I was going to go, what I was going to do. where I was going to go, what I was going to do. But I've reached that point because of him. And I would like to speak on the first point, and I'll have a personal story about that after. So on the first point, when you're getting into high school, you have to strategize around the things you want to do and the things you have to do. And I was glad to take band class because it's a gym credit, so I didn't have to worry about gym. So all four years I could take band class because I didn't have to worry about gym. And that was great. But I knew somewhere in the middle I would have to take a health class. And that came last year during COVID, junior year. And I took Health A and Health B in the same year, just so I can get it out of the way. And that stopped me from taking a class that I did want to take, which was Guitar in Theory, which is specific to me, is a class I really wanted to take. What ended up happening, personal story, is because it was COVID and we had wind days, we were let out of class early, and I happened to go into the guitar class on my own. It wasn't a class that I was scheduled for, but I was so passionate about it that I wanted to go in. So I kind of found a workaround personally. But it would have been a much easier task if I could just take the class and be a part of the class and take that curriculum, you know, as I was supposed to. I was still able to get the learning, but it would have been much easier if it was the way it was supposed to be. And I think it's a big value for everybody, even if you're not going into music, to have the freedom to take more fine arts, to take more music classes, because it inspired me to take the life, the life path that I'm taking, all the music classes I've taken, the people I've met in the music classes. And, you know, the fine arts have played an important part in my life. And I just want to make sure that people that are coming after me, people coming into high school, people are just going to the next grade, are able to express themselves without having to play a chess game of how to fit in health here and here and try to take the class that they really want in the year that they have to take, and so on and so forth. And, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Glenn, how many scholarships did we award to you the other night? So Glenn didn't say. Glenn's actually one of our graduating seniors, was one of our leaders within our Fine Arts Department. How many scholarships can we recognize here?
I got four.
Four of those the other night, so.
Thank you.
I don't get a chance to get to know all 14,500 of our students, but Glenn's taken a leadership role through our Arts Department, by which I've gotten a chance to get to know Glenn a little bit. So congratulations on that work, and as we did for the other speakers, thank you for your courage here to speak in front of the committee tonight.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Congratulations.
Avani Patel?
First, I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to us today. My name is Avani Patel, and I'm a senior at Lowell High, and I'm speaking on behalf of Show Choir to allow health to become a part of the curriculum for physical education equivalent in fine arts courses. So I've been in the fine arts program for about four years now because I'm a senior, and I remember what it was like having to choose classes for my freshman year. As a member of the Lyceum Program, many of my classes were predetermined for me, and so I knew that if I chose to take Show Choir, I would have to take Health later in my high school career to fulfill the graduation requirement. So in my sophomore year, I took Health A and B, but in doing so, I was not able to take the additional Algebra II class that I wanted to take. And so this pushed back my plan for high school math courses, since I originally wanted to take both calculus and statistics, but I could only take one of these classes my senior year. And this has negatively impacted me because I'm going to have to take these classes in college when I could have just gotten it over with in high school. So if health is incorporated into the curriculum of these fine arts courses, students will not have to choose between academics and fine arts. Health would become part of the fine arts and has already been incorporated in many ways. For example, Show Choir has mental health as the foundation of their curriculum. Being a high school student comes with many difficulties, ranging from academics to family responsibilities. Having so many things on your plate can cause anxiety and induce stress among students, but Show Choir helps because it helps them take a break from the problems students have in the other aspects of their lives. Many of us use singing and dancing as stress relievers. Recent studies have shown singing can improve happiness and give rise to a positive mood, not only for the singers but also for the audience. The familial feeling we have with each other improves our mental health because we're always there for each other. Our Show Choir teacher, Mr. Winslow, prioritizes our mental health. He checks in on us and emphasizes that we can go to him if we have any problems or need assistance. And I know it's the same for our band director, Mr. Logan, as Glenn talked about. Our fine arts teachers create an unbreakable bond that develops over the four years in high school, and we know that we can trust them with anything and ask them for anything that we need. Show Choir already meets the physical education requirements, but it won't be difficult to incorporate other topics covered in health. Teachers would still be able to bond with the students but over a longer period of time, allowing them to develop close relationships. Further, it might also be possible to focus on one topic at a time rather than having several health topics condensed into one semester. These topics can even be integrated into the rest of the days where health is not the focus. For example, nutrition, which is an important topic covered in health, can be incorporated into Show Choir because eating healthy allows you to sing and dance properly. We can come up with healthy foods for all of these students to eat for that particular week, and maybe it would be continued into the future. Mrs. Daviso, our Fine Arts Department head, has mentioned that incorporating health into the curriculum will increase mass core graduation completion rates. They'll be able to complete the unit of fine arts without hindering their academic courses that may be useful in attaining majors after high school. Students in the past, including myself, have had to choose between an activity they love and their academics, and I know that the Performing Arts Wellness Program will allow them to choose both. Thank you again.
Any other comments or questions on the Subcommittee's report? Mr. Rossi?
I just wanted to thank the speakers and congratulations on all your achievements. I think that's wonderful. But I think where we had the speakers earlier talking about how intricate it is to have those uncomfortable conversations, you know, I know it's an activity that you guys love, but we need to get comfortable being uncomfortable in situations where Health A and B need to happen because there are a lot of embedded skills within those courses that aren't going to be touched upon in Show Choir or within like a nutrition or pieces. I mean, I love when I hear you guys say that you get very close with your fine arts teachers and you know you can go to them for anything, and that's great, but, and that's what every teacher wants for every student, I believe. But at the same point, we do need to get comfortable feeling uncomfortable in situations, and I don't feel like it should take you away from what you love to do in activity, but help you to grow further as you grow older. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, everybody.
This has, this is kind of something a little bit off-topic, but I know that it was mentioned before, I believe Ms. Martin had brought it up in the, in the original, one of our original, because we had three meetings about the same topic. I know that physical ed requirement is not, it's local, it's a local policy. So I'm just curious as to, and I know that that's been, I'm just wondering if that, if that would free up space somehow so that students could, again, do their fine arts, because I'm a musicals kid. I appreciate, you know, everything about the arts. But I also really know the importance of having, or what I believe is the importance of having a more structured sexual education as well as health in general. So I'm just curious about that. So I guess through the superintendent to, I'm not sure who would answer that question, but maybe the superintendent could.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, Ms. Desmond can answer that question. Ms. Desmond?
So the question is around our requirements around physical education. So we will, as Dr. Boyd mentioned earlier, I believe, in this meeting, we're actually holding, or maybe it was, maybe it was Ms. Doherty. We are going to be looking at our graduation requirements and the Lowell High School redesign in a upcoming Subcommittee meeting. And we will be able to talk about those items in that meeting. But that's something that has been voted on by the school committee as far as what we require for physical education. And I think that, you know, the school committee will be, as a whole, presented with the high school, you know, redesign that we are proposing, and one of the, one of the elements is the requirements for overall graduation.
Any other comments or questions? All set, here on the floor, need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Chun, second by Ms. Doherty. You have a question? Okay, Ms. Doherty?
So, I just want to, for clarification purposes, Ms. Martin's motion to substitute the health requirement didn't get a second, so that means we will continue with health as a requirement for students?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. There wasn't a recommendation on this committee meeting. I believe Ms. Martin was taking the point of privilege as the committee chair. You will still get a recommendation from me. That'll be a recommendation at a later time for a committee meeting. There's been a significant amount of planning and discussion. I certainly heard some feedback here from the committee tonight, but I would ultimately bring a recommendation back for the committee to weigh at a, at a later time. There's not a recommendation on this committee meeting.
If I could just follow up with that. When it was first presented to us, to the full committee, and with this, we need to make a decision right away on it, I had concerns about the losing of health because I do think, especially given the pandemic and the mental health concerns we've had, I think health class five times a week is infinitely different than adding it once a week in a fine arts class. Not that I don't appreciate the benefit that all of our extracurricular allied arts programs provide our students. So I do think that this is the right move at this time to, I look forward to hearing whatever the administration wants to put forward before us, but just that we're not going to be making that change right now. Thank you.
We need a second to accept the report of progress still by Mr. Lay, on the floor, say no, the House has it, the motion is carry. We go to 8.3, policy. Mr. Lay?
I noticed that Ms. Lisa Van Thiel's here. She been, so I wonder if we can take out of order what she's here for so that she can...
Which line item is that?
I believe 10.1.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Lay to move up item 10.1 in the order of business, second by Ms. Thompson. 10.1 is under new business, which is memorandum of agreement with Community Teamwork and YMCA regarding expansion of early learning. We have a registered speaker on this one? Madam Secretary or?
Ms. Ms.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Ms. Van Thiel is our Coordinator of Early Learning Programming, so she's here just to support the content of the MOA. Ms. Phillips has been leading that charge. Ms. Phillips, if you can share a brief summary, and Ms. Van Thiel, if you're adding into that summary for the committee's consideration. This, we're quite excited about this opportunity to expand early learning across our community. As the committee knows, it's a core aspect of our strategic plan. Unfortunately, we slowed this work during the course of the pandemic because demand within the community for early learning during the course of the heightened aspect of COVID-19 changed considerably. Now we're seeing that demand pick back up. We believe this is the right time for us to charge ahead with our expansion. Ms. Van Thiel and Ms. Phillips have been working with our partners across the community largely to overcome one aspect of challenge for us, and that's the challenge of space that this committee is well aware of. But leveraging, because of our challenge with the, with space, leveraging our community partners and the space that may exist within our partnership organizations to ensure that together as one community, we can support all of our children. And really excited about the MOA because it's an example of what we can deliver on as a community when we come together to work on behalf of our students. So Ms. Phillips, if you can give a brief summary of what's included within the MOA, but the end result of this tonight is one step towards providing universal access for pre-K across the community and across the city of Lowell. This is one step because we're working with universal access for our four-year-olds. We've now got to take the step to three-year-olds and two-year-olds and so on so that we can really truly get to full universal access for early learning all the way around. So, Ms. Phillips, if you can?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, school committee members, you may recall last year when we were looking at the FRC waitlist that we had identified that there were about 100 students on the waitlist for a full-day pre-K seat. And that kind of was the catalyst for this year's MOA in us wanting to make sure that any students who want a full-time pre-K program in the city of Lowell is able to have access to one. So we did take steps looking within our own public schools to see where could we expand, but given our facilities constraints, we were only able to add an additional 27 full-time seats within our, within our public school system. So that really opened the opportunity for us to collaborate with our community partners so that we can work together and ensure that anyone who wants that important seat, which helps to prepare for kindergarten, can get it. You'll see that we have two primary partners, but we, we have left the door open for other community partners as we identify, as we, as we determine, you know, what, what are the requirements for a full-time program? What is the definition of quality? What are the criteria for early childhood instructors? So as we work through that, we do anticipate that we'll have additional partners join. But for right now, the two partners who did indicate that they are ready to engage in, in this work with us are CTI, Community Teamwork, Inc., and the YMCA. However, we did hold a meeting with other community partners to run through this draft MOA with them and to, to commit to continue discussions on how we can expand further.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Chun?
If, when this is happening, parents, how do they apply or register their kids for that? Is it through their central office or how, how is it available to our parents to sign up their children?
Yes. So we are already in the pre-K placement process, and I believe we had 104 students who had applied already, and we only have 54 seats. So right now, we know that we have students who are in need of a full-time seat, and so if this MOA is approved, we would then be in touch with those families, we would ask questions around what their needs are, and then we would work hand-in-hand with our community partner to see if we could place them in a partner institution.
Any other comments or questions? Here on the floor, we need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with Community Teamwork and YMCA regarding expansion of early learning by Ms. Del Rossi, second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, your own call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Thank you, Mayor. That's an important step and a big step forward with our strategic plan and, more importantly, meeting the needs of our young people. We often talk about the opportunity gaps that are facing our children, our diverse populations as being our most important work in front of us, and we really believe that the best way to narrow and eliminate the opportunity gaps is to ensure that they're not there to begin with, and early learning is the single greatest investment we can make to ensure that those gaps are not there in kindergarten. So thank you, Ms. Van Thiel and Ms. Phillips, for leading that charge, and a big thank you to any of our partners who may be viewing this tonight in coming together, coming around a table effectively and efficiently on behalf of our children. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We now go back to... We now go back to the, the order of the item on the agenda. That would be eight point three, policy and governance subcommittee meeting, report of the meeting of Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, the policy and governance subcommittee did meet tonight. Present were myself and committee member Ms. Del Rossi, as well as Ms. Phillips and Dr. Duda from the Family Resource Center. We discussed changes in the school assignment policy, which I believe is on the agenda for tonight, a first reading of the full committee. So I'm, I'm not going to belabor it, just to say that, you know, it, it's not, as Ms. Phillips said, it's not substantive changes that they're trying to make at this point. They want to improve communication between our families and the school, which I think is definitely the way we need to go. We've had a lot of issues in the past about the waitlist and parents not being able to get their children in their first-choice schools. One of the things that I thought was significant is that although their grandfather and people who have been on the waitlist since 2019, every year the waitlist will be refreshed. If you want to stay on the waitlist, if you haven't chosen, if you didn't get your first-choice school and you're not happy with, you know, what else is being offered, or you're in the school that you're in temporarily, you need to fill out a form. But it's going to be online, and they're going to try to make it user-friendly so that you can stay on the waitlist. It's not going to be, the way it used to be, you just stayed on the waitlist the whole time your child's in elementary school, trying to get into that school or whatever. And there were some other language changes that I believe everybody has, those red-line documents so you can see yourself. So I would just report that as a report of progress. It was a very quick meeting.
Thank you for the report. Any other comments or question? Here, none. Need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Rossi, second by Mr. Lay on favor of the item, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to one more report, eight point four, the facilities and transportation subcommittee, report of the meeting of Wednesday, June 1st as well, 2022, by Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Ronny. Yes, we met immediately after the policy subcommittee. It was myself and Mr. Lay and Ms. Del Rossi. Dr. Hall was our administrative representative, as well as Mr. Underwood was present to discuss the agenda. So there were a couple of items, and what was most important to me, why I wanted to be able to report out tonight, even though we don't have the minutes, is because we are hoping to convene with the city council's facility subcommittee. And I wanted a lot, some of these items really need to be brought forward when we have that meeting. So the first was an update on the STEM Academy, the portables and the timing. We're looking at late fall is the best-case scenario, which, that's going to be a problem because we have major spacing concerns there. But Mr. Underwood and Dr. Hall discussed there are some other alternatives that we will be exploring, and we expect to hear back from the administration fairly soon on that because we're talking about this September. Some of the things that were floated around was perhaps not having kindergarten students start at the STEM, and that would free up some classrooms. There are some large classrooms that maybe could be made into smaller, you know, two rooms out of one big one. None of them sound great, but I think we're looking at a time crunch here, so we'll look forward to hearing more about that. The second one had to do with plans to address ventilation and heating concerns for summer school because every, all of our schools are going to be having summer school students. I was disappointed to hear that we haven't really got a full place in plan at this moment, but they are looking at where are the, the biggest problems. And I don't know, because I'm doing off the top of my head, so when I finish, if my colleagues want to add something. The other, the other thing we talked about was the furniture and priority needs, and there was some good news on that front. Apparently, we've got quite a few, I had the number, I can't find it, lockers at the high school that are in good condition. We can refurbish those at some of the schools like the Bartlett, which is one school that came right to mind, that the lockers are just in terrible shape. We have priority concerns around some of the cafeteria tables where broken metal is sticking out, and Mr. Underwood assured me that those would be in place for the fall, and we're also hoping that the lockers will be able to be moved over the summer. Once they pull them out of the high school, when the kids leave, then they can move them over to the, the other schools where they can be addressed. Fourth item was our top HVAC concerns. Now, Mr. Underwood can talk off the top of his head about problems with air conditioning that we've had for years, like 10 years, at the Wang or the Butler. And I, we requested, the subcommittee requested that he provide those priority HVAC concerns in writing to the committee before we meet with our colleagues on the facilities subcommittee, that we need to have in writing what are the concerns that we can bring forward as we try to work together to find solutions. And then the last thing I wanted to just talk about, oh yeah, here it is, 2,000 lockers in great shape that we can refurbish. I mean, that is good news, right? We're not throwing things away. We're going to reuse them, and we're going to bring them to some of these schools. We want our kids and our staff to walk into a building where obviously there's heat and there's ventilation, but there's also a sense of pride that this is, you're important, your education is important and valued. So the last thing I want to mention is, Mr. Underwood provided us with a list, it was kind of small text pages by school, of some of the things that, not deep-pocket expenses, but one, some of the ones that jumped out at me, and I know my colleagues had other ones, that the number of windows that need to be replaced or repaired, this is, broken glass, this is something we had talked about with the previous committee last year. Use the Esser money to make sure our windows are working, we have shades, we have screens. This directly impacts the ventilation in our buildings. And we knew when we were out because of the pandemic that it was a high priority thing for the ventilation. So we're looking to get this stuff done right away. And, and Mr. Underwood has provided us with the beginnings of what needs to be happened, what needs to happen. So I would put that forward as a kind of convoluted report on the minutes, but I think it is important. The timing is important, that when we meet with the city, we can say, this is, these are priority things we need done in our schools. Other issues on that list included stair, stairways with problems, doors, pavement issues, but I, I, I won't belabor it. I, I just want to say, I thought we covered a lot in our 45 minutes, and we're looking to get a bigger, a better picture of what our facility needs are, that we can work with the city as partners. Because as Mr. Underwood ended the meeting, I want to share his comment that the quality of our schools, and that includes the physical buildings, directly impacts the economic health of the city. You want to have a high-quality public education system.
Thank you. It's a good report. Ms. Thompson?
Just to add to that, I was able to attend that meeting. One of the big concerns that I had to, is that 12 schools had entryway safety issues. And, you know, just taking into account what happened in Texas, that's obviously a concern. But also, that goes into the shades because that's also a safety concern. Screens, those are safety concerns for situations that happen in Texas. So that's something that obviously I know Ms. Doherty really wants to push forward as well. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for the report, Ms. Doherty. I was just reminded by Madam Secretary here, was that a motion or a request to get the list so that way we can share that with the, at the joint subcommittee meeting with the council? Would that kind of be the request or?
Yeah. I, I, that was, thank you for that. I mean, our recording secretary does an amazing job. We actually had a motion, I believe Ms. Del Rossi made the motion, seconded by Mr. Lay, that this information be provided for the joint facility subcommittee meeting.
Okay, so.
It was in the form of a motion.
Okay, so it's a motion by, at a subcommittee now on the floor by Mr. Rossi, second by Mr. Lay, to provide the list for the joint subcommittee meeting on the favor of the item, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. And we need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Moon, on the favor of the item, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to nine, reports of the superintendent. Nine point one, Lowell Public Schools enrollment process review. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is the resulting report from our external auditors, external consultants. So the consultants aren't here, this is their report. Ms. Phillips can provide a brief summary if the committee desires. It's really provided for the committee's interest and the committee's information. I would also recommend that might, it might be better to refer it on to the Equity and Access Subcommittee. You are going to see the actionable items come to you, as you did see with the budget, you're going to see those come to you. But for a full, in-depth discussion about these findings in this report, I would suggest and recommend to the committee a motion to refer it to the Equity and Access Subcommittee. Again, though, Ms. Phillips can provide a brief overview, if that be the preference of the committee as opposed to the referral to Subcommittee.
We need, are you going to make the motion to refer to the?
I would move that, I, I agree with the superintendent. I think this report is very interesting, and we want to dig a little deeper into it than perhaps doing tonight. And I would recommend it go to the Equity and Diversity, Equity and Access Subcommittee.
Second by Ms. Mauren. Through Mr. Superintendent, does Mr. Tifa Phillips want to make a report, a summary of it still, or is it going to just discuss it in the subcommittee?
Ms. Phillips is the chair, the admin rep for the, the subcommittee, so if it's okay with the committee as a whole, I would suggest we refer it unless there are questions.
Ms. Mauren?
No, I think it's, it's great to refer to the subcommittee. Could I make the request so that we actually have the representatives from PCG there to, to present both their findings and for us to ask direct questions to?
Mr. Superintendent?
It wasn't part of their contract, but we can certainly make the request of them to see.
I think, given the amount of money we spent and, and the reality that we'll probably spend it again, they should probably come to the meeting. Thank you.
We now go to nine point two, report on motions. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Again, Ms. Turner would have loved to have been here. She's not able to be here because she is, she is out. You will see that the reports on responses to motions here are largely from our chief financial officer. I will submit them as reports of progress, all told, all as one, and would suggest, given the fact that she's not here, unless committee members have an objection, that we perhaps bundle these, and we can also bring them back as another committee meeting when she is present, if there are questions.
Thank you. Ms. Mauren?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, in just looking through the, the, the report on the status of outstanding motions, I would like to make a recommendation, you can make it in the form of the motion, that we remove all items that are attributable to members who are no longer serving on the Lowell School Committee, just as a way to start cleaning this up. We have motions that obviously go on for, I mean, decades. So maybe if that could be one pass to eliminate any, any of the outstanding motions, if they haven't been addressed yet, perhaps it's time to move on.
Okay, make, make that a form of motion?
I would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, second by, second by Mr. Lay on the favor of the item, post say no, the eyes have it, that motion is carry. No other thing, I'm going to go each motion response in case the, the maker of the motion would like to make a comment on any of these responses. Starting with nine point two point one, response to motion zero five, CFO of four six twenty-two by Mr. Rossi regarding line item budget from Mooney's. Any comment, Mr. Rossi? Thank you.
All set, thank you.
Good, thank you. Nine point two point two, response to motion six and eight, CFO four six twenty-two and five four twenty-two, again by Mr. Rossi regarding status of copy machines. Any comment, Mr. Rossi?
The response is pretty thorough and speaks for itself, so thank you.
Thank you again. Nine point two point three, response to motion nine, CFO of five eighteen twenty-two, again by Mr. Rossi regarding grant pay positions.
I just want to thank, thank Mrs. Turner for that. I just never realized how many intricate positions are grant paid, you know, so it's interesting to learn that through this learning process. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to nine point three, personnel report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is one of your standard reports. It's provided to you for your information. We submitted as a report of progress. Dr. Hall is available if there are any questions.
Any comments or question? Ms. Churn, do you have your hands up? No, no comments, no hands raised. Just need a motion to accept report of the superintendent, nine point one through nine point three, as reports of progress by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Chun, on the favor of the item, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Nine point four, which is the home education, need a motion to approve by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Mauren. Any comments or discussion? Here, none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Seven yeas, approved.
We now go to section 10, new business. We already have taken up ten point one. We now will start with ten point two, which is the permission to post coordinator, data analysis. Any comments or question? Here, none.
Excuse me.
Ms. Mauren?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I was just curious if we could get a little bit of kind of information on how this new position fits into the existing structure? I know that we have, you know, our, data efforts are already staffed. Could I, could I get a sense of exactly what we're kind of investing in with this new position?
Sure. Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. I consider the data office to be understaffed, and so at present, we have three employees. Ms. Anderson is the director. We have a new hire who replaced a gentleman who left earlier in the year, who manages our, our student management system, the Aspen system, and we have a clerk. We believe, I won't go into great detail, but we believe by comparison with other districts and the functions of our office, that we could have five or six employees easily. This particular position is one that you may recall, similar to one that was occupied by Mr. Schlickman in the past. And so more directly in response to the question you asked, Ms. Martin, we, we see the data office functions in sort of four brackets. There's infrastructure and maintenance, so that's like having the Aspen system, having some other systems, and having it be maintained, clearing errors, et cetera, et cetera. That's a big chore. And that's primarily the chore now of this, this fellow, Mr. McDonald, who's been hired this year. The, the second main function is compliance reporting. So there's always, it seems, a state report deadline coming up, staffing reports, student reports, and so on. There, there's quite a bit of work involved in that. Some of it is clerical, some of it is management. A third category that we've not attended to sufficiently well so far has to do with district strategy and operating functions. So you may recall, we, we had a subcommittee meeting earlier in the year where we talked about possible options for providing data visualization. How do we get at how our schools are doing on various metrics so that we can gauge what sorts of supports they need and so forth? We, you may also recall, we had a number of attempts at an RFP to contract with a company to provide for that service. The RFP process was not successful, we had very few bids, and the companies that we did interview and discuss with were unable to work with us and, and work with our systems sufficiently well. We've come with a great solution for that one, by the way, and it was discussed briefly. We're, we have a partnership with UMass Lowell that, that we're, we're working on, and that will target that third bracket. And then the last bracket is data for informing. And then the last bracket is data for informing individual student experience. So we have various assessments in schools. Do we know what we're looking at? Are we able to make the best use of that data for teachers and schools to realize which students are being successful mid-year at various points in the year, after each and every lesson, if we get that sophisticated? And we, at the moment, are not adequately staffed or we don't have a position to cater to that. Mr. Schlickman, part of his role provided some analytics in that area. This position is, closely resembles his job description. It's been updated very slightly to focus on analysts, analysis. And in order to attract a greater slate of candidates, we've changed it to master's degree preferred rather than required.
So of these four areas, and I'm, I'm kind of trying to envision an org chart right now. You've got, above this position is the, what's the title above this?
A director.
The director?
Yes.
And that's a data analysis, director of data analysis for the district?
This position we're talking about with data analysis.
To the director?
I beg your pardon.
I'm sorry. You finished what you were saying. I'm sorry.
With the, with the position that we're, that's, we're looking for permission to post is a position, is a data analyst position.
So it's a, but it's a coordinator. Is that correct?
Yes, coordinator of data analysis.
Okay.
Yes.
So how does it break down with a director and then a coordinator covering these four areas of, of responsibility?
So the, the data analyst position we're talking about would be doing just that. It's data analysis. And at one time in recent years, we had a count of all the various assessments that we used in the district. There were over thirty, right? Who's monitoring them? Who's providing us guidance on their use? And what information we get from those assessments? And how are we using it to benefit the schools and individual students? So that's what this position is.
So that's number four?
That's number four.
Of your four things?
Correct. The overall, the director oversees the whole, all of the programming. Frankly, the director right now is involved in a lot of the compliance reporting. It's, you know, because we, we don't have sufficient staff to take, to care of those functions. Most of the school year, we didn't have somebody managing Aspen either. And so the director was taking care of that function. A better use and a more, the, the vision for that role is involved in more strategic planning and oversight of our data use overall.
So there, is there no one in that reporting role right now? And the director's been managing that?
That's correct. One of the people who's key to the reporting is a clerk who's on leave for about six months.
Okay, but it's not a, it's not a, it's not an empty position that the director was managing. It's just that there's been a absence, so.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then now we can look at the, the kind of third issue with the visualization. That's going to be basically taken on by our partnership with the university. So this person, this coordinator position, will it have any direct reports? Like, like activities one and two, will they report to the coordinator or do they report to the director?
This position will report to the director.
I'm sorry to be in the weeds. I'm just-
It's quite all right. I understand.
So the, the director now will have basically three direct reports? Because the UMass Lowell thing will go away.
That's correct.
And the reporting is really a clerk level position that provides that?
For the most part. It's, it's more complicated than that. There's, yeah, but, but just for the most part.
I wouldn't want to be that clerk, to be clear, but yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. You know, I, I ask the questions because this is, this is an area where we had eliminated a position and then it came back as two separate positions and now we're adding another position. I don't dispute that we need to have high quality people and, and, and high quality data to be able to inform what we're doing. I just want to ensure that we're kind of building a system that makes sense that, you know, in terms of reporting and, and the way that the work is getting done, that it's kind of, it makes sense to, you know, the way we'll be conducting ourselves.
I appreciate what you're saying. We've described it as a, a division is for a comprehensive system. And I, I, I won't get into detail now, but I would love and welcome an opportunity to share a very detailed outlook for you and report on, on what we're doing and why.
That would be great. I mean, we live and die by our data. I mean, so that's.
You're all set, Ms. Moon?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question about the salary. Can you justify the six-figure salary for a coordinated position? I'm just wondering how we come about to that amount of salary.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. These are unionized positions that are salary schedules that have been negotiated by the committee. So these fall into the relevant salary schedule. Dr. Hall, can you share a brief summary on just how we, how we determine the salary schedules with LSAA?
Sure. There is a grid in the contract book. A coordinator generally would make between a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-two thousand, roughly. Sometimes more or less depending upon whether or not they have a PhD or EDD or a master's and their years of service. So that's why a range is listed.
Thank you.
You're all set. Any other comments or question? Ms. Doherty?
I, I also had some concerns because the, we're taking a lot of the requirements out. We're not requiring a master's degree. We're preferring it. That's fine. We're not requiring that they have teacher certification. I haven't taught, which I get that. It's an IT position. We're removing the supervisor certification. But in the same three to five years' experience for a hundred and twenty thousand, that seems like a really good salary for three to five years' experience. So I know the coordinator position is on the grid with the union. But would that be a coordinator who's got teaching certification, master's degree required? Things like that. It seems like this job description is less. And I guess the other thing that concerned me was when you talk about familiarity with mass context and data systems, especially DESI, a plus. I would hope we get somebody who's very competent with DESI, very competent with Aspen, with all the programs that we currently use. I think in the past, decisions have been made to bring people on that maybe didn't have that expertise, thinking, oh, they'll learn about it. But we know Aspen is a very complicated program. And if you look at the recommendations in the Family Resource Center report, a lot of what they're recommending is that we get up to speed with the technology and use Aspen to do, it's this powerful program that we're, we're just not tapping into. So, I mean, I guess that's where, I mean, I'm not going to vote against it, but I do share concerns with if we're lowering expectations and standards but still providing, as Mr. Lay said, a six-figure salary for somebody with three years of experience? You know? It just causes some pause.
Does, Mr. Superintendent want to, want to make comment or?
Yeah, I, I would just say overall, we hire the highest quality candidates in every single position. So I, I do believe that the individuals that are accountable for this work will make informed decisions as they go through the hiring process. I think it's also important to note, because there's only a few committee members who are here at the last point of the state's review. Our performance management systems, this was prior to my hiring, when the state conducted that review, our performance management systems across the organization were cited in a number of ways. So the, the data office even prior to my arrival was significantly understaffed, which was showing through the data capacity of the, of the organization. We've now gone through a full redesign. We've also brought in outside support to help us analyze that. And Mr. Skinner's gone through a level of analysis, which is in addition to the analysis that Dr. Guillory conducted previously. So we're building out that division. And I'm really excited about the partnership with UMass Lowell. That's going to allow us to build out that, that further capacity. So we are moving in the right direction. I would tell you and would let the committee know, this is not the last time you're going to hear about staffing and investments within our data office and our data infrastructure. We're expecting to learn a considerable amount through our partnership with UMass Lowell. And we're continuing to make sure that we can bring us up to, I think one committee member said, twenty-first century here. And our data systems within the, our school district have been an underinvestment for obvious reasons with the lack of resources and constraints that the committee was dealing with for some time. So as we're moving forward, I think this is a, another step. You've, you've seen and heard multiple steps and we're going to continue to build that out for the committee. You do have the full commitment that we're going to hire and recruit the highest quality candidates for every position. And those results and those outcomes, we are and understand that we are accountable for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Through Mr. Superintendent, does Mr. Skinner have anything to add? Anything else to add or you're all set?
I just reinforce what the superintendent said. I actually intended to refer to the 2019 report. Since I've been in this role and overseeing the data office, I've been very conscious of it. We are, we've been found wanting in Lowell. This is prior to Dr. Boyd's tenure. And the report clearly outlines what's missing. The committee not having disaggregated data, us not basing our decisions on that. And while I've been very conscious of it, I went into this role with the data office understaffed, this position not filled. And for the most part, this year, we've had one person in the data office performing all those functions we talked about, right? So, so we, we believe, and I have reason to believe it, as I said, I'd take an opportunity, I'd welcome an opportunity to share more details with you and make a case for five or six staff members and outline what the need is and how they would be used. But, but this position, to my way of thinking, is, is critical. It's, it's a minimum to get us on board with what we need in the, in that office. As far as the salary, that's, that's not my business. However, I can tell you that the staffing right now is a very, the hiring is a very, very competitive market. These are people who may or may not be versed in Department of Education or, or in Aspen, but they need to have skills in data analysis. And they can do that for pharmaceutical companies or they can do it for Lowell Public Schools, right? They could, and they're, they're highly sought after. Put out the application and see how many applicants we get. And you'd know very quickly. It's a very competitive market for, for hiring.
Any other comments or question, Ms. Doherty?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Ten point three is the second reading and approval of final version of school assignment policy. File JCA. Any comment, Ms. Doherty?
I, I believe it's the first reading because you have to have the full committee go through it once. That's my understanding of-
Mr. Superintendent?
The committee opted for the first reading at the Subcommittee meeting during your last meeting. Opted to use the Subcommittee process as your first reading. You do have the option to look at it as a final reading and approval. If the committee so chooses to refer it on to the next, next committee meeting, we can also do that. But it, it was within the discussion at the last committee meeting to utilize the Subcommittee process for the first reading. Hence the reason that the Subcommittee needed to be scheduled prior to this one.
Any other comment? So need a motion to approve the school's assignment policy filed JCA by? Any?
Motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve, second, we need a second? By Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
We now go to ten point four. Vote to approve an adjustment to the date. The committee shall annually evaluate the superintendent from July one to no later than August first. Any comments or question, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This was the decision that the committee made previously. You're just solidifying this with, in writing here. Our HR office put together the document here. So neither my attorney nor your attorney's been involved. It does appear to be procedural, hence the motion and item here in front of you tonight.
Ms. Moon?
Thank you very much. Yes, so this is, this is the kind of culmination of our conversations around the superintendent's evaluation. Just so the committee is aware, this puts the onus on us to complete our evaluation basically during the month of July. I would make a request from the superintendent that the committee be provided with the October goals so that we all have that in hand. And then we'd anticipate, I believe, getting the artifacts and the portfolio of, of materials end of June.
Yeah, I think July one is what we said. I can definitely do that. Absolutely.
Same deal. And then we'll have an opportunity to have one meeting where the committee is able to, having reviewed the materials, be able to ask questions of the superintendent, be able to get any additional information we want. And then by the end of July, we'll have the meeting. We will actually conduct the, the evaluation itself. Just so everyone's aware of what you should expect. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I just would like some clarification because I, I don't want to get the materials on a Friday and be expected to have, you know, read them over over the weekend, so.
I think our plan was that we'd receive them, I mean, June 30th, July 1st. And that the next, the review meeting would be at least a week or two after that.
That our first meeting would be a week-
To have the conversation and ask any questions and review any materials. And then we'd conduct the actual evaluation either at the, the regularly scheduled meeting of the third, which is scheduled for the third weekend in July, or we could schedule a special meeting the fourth week in July, if we chose to do it that way. Either way, we'd have two weeks at least to review the materials before our first conversation.
I mean, two weeks sounds great. My other request is, when do we meet to discuss the whole process?
Do you mean establishing goals for the next year?
No, the process of the evaluation. You know, we have a meeting where, I mean, this is the timeline, but when our comments, are all comments going to be included or only, you know, those kinds of details? Do you want to try to do a meeting?
We can. I, I thought we had kind of determined a lot of that, that the, that as the aggregator, I'd be compiling all the information. My, what I presented to the committee at that point was I would include all comments, that everyone would have access to all the information from any committee members. But if, we can certainly have another conversation.
I wasn't aware of that, so, okay.
No worries.
And then my final request is that we, I would respectfully ask the superintendent to limit the amount of materials that he gives us. Last week I wait, last year I waited. It was eleven pounds of reading material and I just don't think we need that much. But where we have two weeks, I have a little more time than a weekend to go over it, but just would, you know.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve by Ms. Moon, second, need a second, by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. We now go to the budget transfer. Need a motion? Transfer budget in amount of, I'm thirty, I'm sorry? Ms. Doherty? This is ten point five. Do you have a comment on the budget transfer? Okay.
My, my question with the budget transfer is it's telling us what the money is being transferred for. It's for the After Dark program, but I don't know where the transfer is coming from. And through you two, Dr. Boyd.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, yes. Vacancy savings. So that's the, that's where largely your dollars are going to be drawing from within this current fiscal year. So it's vacancy savings from various line item within personnel of positions that have been vacant at various times during the year. So the vacancy savings will be pulled into this line item, which again, I think is a real celebratory program within our schools, which is our vote after dark.
Motion to approve.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Excuse me. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Ten point six, vote to change the July and August school committee meeting to second week. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a discussion that the mayor and I have had. You have one meeting in July and August. It hap, it so happens that the one week- It so happens that the one week that the committee chose for its meeting happens to not be a week that city council is meeting. The mayor, as you know, has multiple obligations across both bodies. This adjustment aligns your one meeting with also one of the meetings that city council has during the course of the summer.
So are the dates, I'm sorry.
Ms. Doherty?
I just want to clarify. So the dates listed on this schedule, July 13 is the date we would meet.
Moving it to your second week of each month. Let me, if I pull up the calendar here, this item here, because it doesn't list the date, so let me make sure that, um, it's a second, this specifies the second, second Wednesday is July 13th. The second August Wednesday is August 10th.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
And just to add to that, many of the public, they watch the city council, they also watch the school committee meeting, so have them watch one right after the other, the day after, and give them vacation as well.
Motion to approve.
We need a, need a motion to change the July and August school committee meetings to the second week by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Ten point seven is the 2022, 2023 school committee meeting date. Any comments or questions? Ms. Thompson?
I'm just curious if the April 19th date falls in April vacation, because if it does, can we please switch it now? Because that's always, it's been an ongoing issue, that people would like to take vacation, or if they have children, would like to be able to do that during that week. So if it does fall during April vacation, I would ask that we consider changing that date.
Yes, you, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Yes, you do have a policy on the, your committee schedule. This typically follows that. It's around your first and third Wednesday of each month. You then make individual adjustments accordingly. That is an adjustment that you typically make accordingly. Ms. Desmond puts together our instructional calendar. Do you happen to have that linked in front of you, Ms. Desmond? We can pull it, we can pull it back just to make sure you don't have that conflict. This is a procedural vote for the committee that follows your school committee policy, and then you make the adjustments. But good flag, Ms. Thompson, might as well do it now. Ms. Desmond, if you can pull that up.
Do you want me to verify this?
Please.
Yes, so, yes, February vacation and April vacation, there are, I'm sorry, April vacation, this is a date that falls within April vacation. April vacation is April 17th through April 21st.
So I make a motion to have it on April 12th, if everybody is inclined to do that.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Thompson to change one of the dates anyway to April 12th?
Yes, to change the 19th date to the 12th, April 12th.
Second by Ms. Doherty. Any other comments or question?
February vacation is Monday, February 20th through the 24th, so that we are not in that window.
All right, so we're going to take a roll call to vote on the meeting dates with the change that Ms. Thompson made a motion on also. So we need a motion by Ms. Doherty. Second by, this is for the entire meeting dates for the year. Second by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
We vote, you can vote on the motion first, and then you can go back to the date.
Okay.
So the motion, okay. We'll do Ms. Thompson and.
Okay, we'll do Ms. Thompson first, and then we'll do the call.
We'll do that one first, and then vote on that.
Okay.
The document's going to need to come back.
Okay. Right, so we'll do a roll call on Ms. Thompson's motion, which was second by Ms. Doherty. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Okay. Now we're going to do the vote and roll call on the committee meeting date.
With voted change.
With the voted change. And we had, the motion was by Ms. Doherty, and second by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Got ten point eight, which is to vote to accept a donation of $5,000 from the Laura Bush Foundation. Any comment? Hearing none, need a motion to accept by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Ten point nine, approval of a research proposal, UMass Lowell. Any comments or question? Hearing none, need a motion to approve by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chun?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
I hate to stop our flow here, but this is Ms. Desmond's pursuit of her doctoral degree. I think it does deserve a round of applause to make that, take that, that was here. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. Now go ten point ten, approval of a research proposal, American International College. Any comments or question? Hearing none, need a motion to approve by Ms. Mon, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Okay, we're now in the 11, the professional personnel, need a motion to bundle and items 11.1 through 11.3 by Ms. Chun, second by Ms. Doherty.